Next item is community forum. This is for community members to discuss anything that's not on the agenda. Is there anybody here for something not on the agenda? Hearing done, moving on. Conflict of interest declarations. Do we have any conflict of interest declarations? Okay. Now the motion to adopt the agenda. Motion by Ted. Second?
Second.
Second by Ted. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Communication and discussion items, administrative reports. Mrs. McGurk, we're gonna move you up to the top. Okay? So you don't have to stay through the whole meeting if you don't want. Okay? Are you ready now? We are. Do you want us to move?
I think so. Mrs. Kelsey put three chairs there for like three of you to move and three of you.
Good.
Well, good evening. It's really great to be here. I am so pleased I came forty-five minutes early because normally I always have to set up. And I came in and there was absolutely nothing to do. This room was ready to go. I should've known after working with this school for eight months that this is the way it would be. So anyway, it was really great to come here, really great to see everything set up. You guys just moving smoothly like I've noticed throughout my eight months of working with your school. For those of you in the audience, my name is Mary Lou McGurk and I'm a school success facilitator. Meaning that I work with schools to help them to get better at what they're doing. And one of my favorite people in the whole world is Charlotte Danson. And Charlotte Danson wrote the framework for teaching. And she always said, no matter how good you are, no matter if you've had distinguished moments, no matter what your job is, you can always get better at what you do. So that's kind of the good and the bad. Yeah, you can always get better no matter how good you are. My husband also sends his regards to you guys. I was working on this PowerPoint and he said, remember, these people have lives. They wanna go home tonight. Before you even bring your sleeping bags. So it is detailed, but that's what we want you to know. We want you to know the details from all the data, everything that we dug into, everything that we discovered and the plans that were made. Your school, the elementary and the middle school are title schools. And so the title schools have to do a comprehensive needs assessment every five years. So they're doing it this year. They won't have to do it again for five years. It's such a great idea because doing the same thing over and over and over, if it happens to not be right, that's not a good idea. So you do a needs assessment to find out what are your needs? What are your focus areas? What are your strengths? What do you wanna do in order to make your school a better place? Now, the high school is not a title school, but the board made a really wise decision and I have to compliment them on that. They decided to do all three schools, do this needs assessment with all three schools. And then all three schools will make an action plan. Well, after we went through all the data, that just, it was just such a smart thing because we came up with district strengths and district areas of focus in addition to schools. So you'll find that as we unfold all of the information. I also wanna compliment the people that I worked with. I was very fortunate to work with teachers for many, many hours. They don't take breaks, they don't eat. I bought stuff today. Well, we did order food in a couple times, but yeah, they just kept on working. They were so diligent. There were some things that I said, we might not have to worry about that. But oh no, they had to dig in, they had to work. They had to turn over everybody. And that's what we did when we worked through this. So one of the things I'm really big on is outcomes. I think that kids need to know, people need to know, you go to church, I'm gonna see a bulletin. I wanna know what's gonna happen. I wanna know what I'm gonna know when we're done. So I have the outcomes there for you. I'm also gonna go through the outcomes for this report right here. When we leave tonight, when you leave, we'll see lessons in school board. You're going to have an understanding of the South Dakota Comprehensive Needs Assessment Framework and Process. You're gonna have all of that. You also are gonna know how it applies to your schools. Cause that's why we're here, we're talking about your schools. The second outcome is, you're going to be able to identify the strengths, the celebrations of your three schools. And you're also going to know what the focus areas look like, those areas that your school wants to work on. And then you're going to see what an action plan looks like and how that has a positive effect on student achievement, cause that's what we're talking about. We're talking about student achievement here. You're also going to be familiar with the important next steps. I would tell you as we go along, there are some times that most, the schools have already started the next steps. We were just kind of into the process and I noticed that Mrs. Hyder is now using outcomes on everything. And some things that we saw the school might want to do, she started using right away. We saw that in other ways, in other places during this process. So there's important next steps, some of them have already begun. I've already told you about the schools being title schools, the high school isn't. Some things you see will be district-wide, some things you see will be by school. The agenda looks like this. I'll walk you through that framework and that process. We'll look at those strengths, how they align with some components, the four components. And one of the things that's very important, it's very hard with teachers to do this. We'll talk about this circle of concern and the circle of influence. They have to keep that in front of us all the time. We'll talk about some focus areas, again, those next steps and the action plan. If you were at the meeting last fall, when I came to do the presentation, I brought this book. It's the handbook that we use throughout the whole process. It describes the frameworks and the components. And what it does is provide us with the look fours. The look fours are the things we're looking for in a school that make a school a good place to go to school. So that was our handbook. Right here, educating the whole child, all of this pertains to that. We're looking at it through the lens of effective leadership, curriculum and instruction, talent development, which is like usually called process or professional development, and family culture and climate. I'll dig into those a little deeper in the next slide. The process, I'll go through that too, is the outer ring. And that looks like action research, but you know what it looks like? It looks like everything you plan on a daily basis. If you're a farmer going to the field, you have a plan. If you're a minister and you're going to church, you have a plan. It's how you collect the data, analyze it, prioritize it, and then make a plan to do something that's successful. So the framework has four components. Effective leadership looks at those, the knowledge, the skills, the abilities that your leadership, specifically the principals of the schools, what abilities and knowledge do they have in order to make this a successful place to go to school? And of course, they're responsible for the other three different components. Curriculum and instruction is what teachers are teaching and how they're teaching it. Talent development is all that professional learning, whether it happens so that you bring somebody in to deliver the professional learning, or it is in staff, or it's, and it's for the entire staff. So we're talking about professional learning and family climate and cultures, that learning environment. But you know, that has to be there first. That has to be a positive, it has to be a positive place to learn, or these other things don't happen. The process is something I'm really bit excited about, cause I think this is a good process. And this is what these teachers did periodically, the teams, for the last eight months. First, they became a team. We had a team of elementary, a middle school, and a high school team. And what they determined then was, the biggest thing was, how they were gonna meet and communicate all this information to people. Because we don't want this to be a surprise to our staff. It can be a surprise, but they won't really buy it. So that forming a school leadership team is very important. After that, data was collected. And we collected data in many ways, the next slide will show you all the different ways they collected data. I collected data, I came to the school. And we took that data, I took it all home, I organized it in summaries, brought it back, and then they analyzed it. From there, we identified strengths and we identified some focus areas and places where the teachers, the teams decided the data set, there's some places we can get better at what we do. We prioritize those focus areas because there could be several. And there were several. But you can't do everything all in one year. So we took a rubric and prioritized all the focus areas, assigned a number to each one within that rubric, and determined which the top three or four or five were, and then had discussions around the ones that were the most immediate and the ones that they wanted to take on this year. The focus area, the focus area is like having a cold and a sore throat. You know, it could be like, every morning I wake up and I feel like I have a cold and I have a sore throat. And so I take some over-the-counter remedies. I take some Halls cough drops, but every morning I have that sore throat. And I said to my husband, I am so tired of having this sore throat. I don't know why I have it. What is causing it? And he says, well, you sleep with the window open. And that was the cause. I shut the window, I didn't have sore throat anymore. So what we're looking for, we know there are things that the teachers, the teams, the schools wanna fix, we dug in and looked for the cause. We wanna figure out, can we just shut the window? I wish it'd be that easy, you can't just shut the window. But that is what we're looking for and that's what we found. They created an action plan with actions, detailed actions, eight, nine steps to each action, their timelines, roles and responsibilities for people so that they get stuck. The last piece is to be a very exciting piece. I love evaluation. And we have not determined exactly how they're gonna evaluate all of these actions that they've decided to put into the timelines. Because again, they wanna collect data, it's quarterly, to find out, are the strategies you're using actionable instead of making a difference? They're not gonna put, do them, and go back to the action plan, make some changes. So that's the process we went through. There's some facts about your school specifically. Here were teams, the three teams, two to three teachers on each team, and they all met for twelve to sixteen hours after school on Fridays in order to put all this information together. That doesn't count all the time that they met to collect the data and we had some meetings before and then last fall. But the actual analyzing the data and writing action plans happened in this twelve to sixteen hours. You can see all the sources that we used. We collected surveys, the school collected surveys, from teachers, from students, from parents, from support staff. And there were both closed questions, statements on there, and open-ended, where people were allowed to write whatever they wanted to write. I either did the principals, I interviewed teacher focus groups. We, I come over, I observe teachers' teaching. And then I looked at the observations that the principals had done and their walkthroughs, their evaluations. And so you can see we had meeting minutes and agendas and plans, lesson plans. I looked at them, wow, lesson plans, curriculum documents. Professional development plan looks for it. That's one of the things you'll hear about later in our focus areas. And then translated documents for our ESL students. So that is a lot of data to look at. We also triangulate the data. And what we mean by that is, we ask the same question of many people in different ways. It would come out as a closed-end question. For instance, I align my lesson, I would not ask a teacher, I align my lessons to standards. They might say it one way here, yes, somewhat, always. Or we ask them to design a lesson, tell us how they did that, and we look for it in there. I look for it in lesson plans, I look for it in observations. I talk to teachers. So we triangulate the data by looking for it in many different sources. Here is the way we looked at data. Every single question that was asked or statement was made, we looked at that same one in three different ways, or we had it available to, to look at it that way. It kind of depended on if, how the teacher processed the information. So for instance, one of the student survey questions was, I understand what quality work looks like. That's a very important question to a kid that aren't a student all the way up through twelfth period. So you need to know what good work looks like. So we asked that question if they did. You can see it with C I two in parentheses. That means this is a question in the component of curriculum and instruction. Well, we had fifty-five kids answer that question. And so first we looked at it in numbers, eight out of fifty-five said this, or three out of fifty-five said this, three out of fifty-five, one out of fifty-five. Or you could look at it in percents, if you're the kind of person that processes it that way. All of the survey questions were also available in a pie chart. But we didn't work with a pie chart a lot, because it's really easy to glance up there and go, oh, all is good. I see a lot of red and blue. But no, your teachers wanted to dig into it more so with the numbers and the percentages. And then when they dug into it, they would say, there's four out of fifty-five that don't understand what quality work looks like. What did I do wrong? What can I do differently? How did that happen? And I'm going, well, let's move on to the next question, you know, well, you can fix that. That is not a huge thing. Okay? So, but it really was concerning to the teachers. So that is how to analyze, I would say, truckloads and truckloads of data like that. Well, you, you'll discover that there are a lot of strengths that we found. And I wanna go over those strengths because you need to celebrate those. More importantly, you need to keep doing them. You can't just leave them out there and say, hey, we're good at that, we're not gonna do this anymore. You have to keep doing these good things. So some of the strengths became district strengths. So how that happened is, when we prioritized, well, I'll explain that during the focus areas. Let's just take the strengths right there. Okay, these are across the district. One of them is, the district had mental health and communication as the district priorities. And that was in all three schools, so it became the district priorities. And one of the things in the look fours we look for is that the principal uses multiple sets of data and a collaborative approach to align professional learning with the school priorities. So what the principals did was have conversations with teachers, conversations with students, through observations, and put out a survey of parents and came up with, mental health is a really big deal. And so they aligned their professional development with that, it was loving logic. And so that happened, it was available to kids, to students, and to community members. So that piece became strength. The other one is communication. And they talked a lot about communication and all the different things that they did in communication. That is always a problem. It'll continue to be a problem and they'll continue working on it all the time. Just think about your at-home. What causes a disturbance at your house? It's communication. And so they work hard at it, I know your Facebook page, I know you're, you have other things online, your website, but still, people miss things. Certainly find many ways in order to communicate with everyone. So that is a strength. Some other strengths is, this came out a lot from teachers and from the principals, is instructional time is bound by everyone and there's very little instructional time lost. And that might not be something you think of, but when you think about a school that encompasses so many things, so many outside activities, how instruction can go by the wayside? We're just gonna shorten the classes, we won't have a class, whatever. It doesn't happen here. They have a policy about, like, pepper allergies, that sort of thing. And so instructional time, minimal time is lost. The principals, and this, the teachers told us this, that they're involved in designing and implementing curriculum, they work with them in instruction, assessment practices, acquiring and implementing research-based instructional strategies. This is what we heard. And in most areas, this is what I saw when I worked with the teachers. Some other strengths include, the principals establish a routinely supervised classroom and curriculum expectations. So teachers know, you know, you have a framework, Charlotte Danson Framework for Teaching, you use that for evaluation, observation purposes, the teachers know what it is. So teachers are held accountable to those standards. And then one school was very highly, the principals provided, they were talking to support with teachers' curriculum, and it was also high in the other two, so it became a district strength. Here's something that I'm really excited about when I saw this, that all of your new teachers participate in a state-like mentoring program with veteran teachers from the district. You cannot believe how important that is. The research tells us that teachers stay in teaching because they have had a mentor. Mentors keep them there. We have that person who can go for, go to help, you know, they're gonna help you with things. You know, it's not like an induction program where here's the coffee, here's the lunch, done. No, it's helping teachers become better teachers. I am on the development team for the state-like mentoring program. And in some of our districts, we don't have teachers to pair up with mentors, or we don't have mentors to pair up with new teachers. And so like, we have teachers in Sisseton, new teachers, but their mentors might live in La Bega. We have teachers in Timberlake and their mentors live in Bel Poosh. So this is such a plus to have this in your school district. So that's something you can all pat yourself on the back for. Most students feel as if their teachers assist them and there are people they can go to for help. So you see, we're using the word most, okay? Most teachers, or most students. Most students say they can talk to a school counselor if needed and can identify goals for the future. And we had a couple comments where kids wrote in that they appreciated the opinion that the counselor did for them. That was a strength. Most students agree their parents support their success at school. That is really good to hear, isn't it? That's like music to your ears, to know that that's going on. And most students say they have opportunities for after-school activities. I think that was like high, ninety-five percent, most everyone felt that they had something, if they wanted it, could go to. Most students and parents feel the level of difficulty, their assignments is appropriate and manageable. We also heard that most parents feel teachers care about their child. A very important thing. Most parents feel that the school provides a supportive learning environment. And we had some comments about that. Specifically, the high school had some strengths that were promoted. Most teachers said that they use instructional strategies and formatively assess learning, curriculum and instruction. You'll notice some teachers are using a variety of high-level instructional strategies. So we're gonna talk about that later. Some using them, higher-level thinking orders and those kinds of instructional strategies. That's good, we're glad, but it wasn't enough for the high school team. So you're gonna see that come up as a focus area also. Most teachers feel emotionally safe at school and think that staff members honor failing knowledge. The middle school has its strengths. Most teachers use appropriate instructional strategies, formatively assess, and establish a culture of learning. That culture of learning, again, is something that's so important, and I saw that when I observed, in the classrooms, in the middle school. And that is saying, guess what, this is really important stuff, kids, this is stuff that you need because, and you're really smart kids, you're gonna get this. And so it's just telling kids, we have high expectations for you and you should have pride in your work. So that culture of learning is a very important piece. There we saw it in the middle school. We also saw all students were following teachers' directions and they were getting positive interactions with one another, quite observed. I like that in the middle school. You know, that's where the most fun is. Yeah, kids are always having fun in the middle school, but it was positive fun. And then the student-teacher interaction, interaction was also definitely positive. So the next one is the elementary. So think back about your elementary days and none of this is going to surprise you. Just go ahead and read through all of those strengths. Okay, so raise your hand if you're surprised that elementary kids say this. Yeah, probably not. Yeah, that, and so it's great to see that there. That's exactly what we expect. So to summarize this piece, to summarize the strengths, we looked at a lot of evidence and we found strengths in all four areas. Okay? So that's good news, isn't it? That's really good news. So before I go further and we move into the circle of influence and we talk about the focus areas, what questions might you guys have about any of these positive things you just saw? Any of these celebrations? Ah, okay, let's go. We're gonna move on now. And after I did this, I'm going, this is, I just have to explain it. I'm looking at your, I did access to the school that I worked with at night, told Mrs. Kelsey that, I'm sorry for all the emails, but I have this great idea, I have this great idea, so I emailed her. So in my accession, I'm looking at Facebook and I send these great pictures. Well, here is Nurse Julie, and it said, here was the caption, Nurse Julie is focusing on elementary something or other. Anyway, health something or other. So I thought, focusing, that's a great picture for here, focus areas. So I'm gonna be very clear, Nurse Julie's not a focus aerial. Okay? Nurse Julie just got to be in the picture here with all the little kids. So looking at some focus areas, I wanna bring you to this. This is a piece that's very hard for anyone who's been a parent, anyone who's been a grandparent, any teachers, for most everyone. We care about so many things, but you can't impact everything. And so the conversations would get big and they'd get long because guess what? They care about everything. And I have to keep saying to the teams, only care, not only care about, only choose an area that you can focus on, that you can have a direct impact. Okay? So if I, as Mary Lou, who knows nothing about buses, and my biggest concern is that buses just don't run right, people tell me, I cannot get too cranked up about that because I cannot do anything about buses. Can't fix a bus. But I can fix other things. Those are the ones I'm gonna work on, the ones I really, really can have an impact on. So that's what a focus area is. Something that the data said we can fix, we can change, we can have an impact on. So I'll bring you back here now to the steps in the process, because I love the process. We are here where it says focus areas were identified and prioritized. So each school had nine or ten focus areas, and some of them were the same, cause well, teachers are teaching and kids are learning, and so some of the focus areas are the same. But when they prioritize them, you see this rubric that has four different areas of measurement, sometimes something will come to the top for the elementary, but it'd be kind of here in the middle for the middle school or the high school, or the other way around. However, when looking at all of them, the way they were prioritized, they still can be a district focus. Just makes sense. So the teams went ahead and prioritized all these focus areas, had long conversations, went through a process to determine the root cause. Now I'm just gonna throw a strategy at you, you're gonna know what we're throwing it at, created that action plan, still thinking about evaluation. So if you need to take a breath, we're halfway done. Okay? All right, you okay? All right, here's the district focus. I put it on.
That encompasses so many things, so many outside activities. How instruction can go by the wayside? We're just going to shorten the classes, we don't have a class, whatever. It doesn't happen here. They have a policy about pepperellis, that sort of thing. And so instructional time, minimal time is lost. The principals, and this, the teachers told us this, that they're involved in designing and implementing curriculum. They work with them in instruction, assessment practices, acquiring and implementing research-based instructional strategies. This is what we heard, and in most areas, this is what I saw when I worked with the teachers. Some other strengths include the principals establish a routinely supervised classroom and curriculum expectations. So teachers know, you know, you have a framework, a Charlotte D'Amerson framework for teaching. You use that for evaluation, observation purposes, the teachers know what it means. So teachers are held accountable to those standards. And then one school was very highly, the principals provided, they were taking support with teachers' curriculum. And it was also high in the other two, so it became a district, uh, strength. Here's something that I'm really excited about when I saw this, that all of your new teachers participate in a state-like mentoring program with veteran teachers from the district. You cannot believe how important that is. The research tells us that teachers stay in teaching because they have had a mentor. Mentors keep them there. We have that person who can go for, go to help, you know, they're going to help you with things. You know, it's not like an induction program where here's the copy, or here's the lecture, done. No, it's helping teachers become better teachers. I am on a development team for the statewide mentoring program. And in some of our districts, we don't have teachers to pair up with mentors. Or we don't have mentors to pair up with new teachers. And so like, we have teachers in Sisseton, new teachers, but their mentors might live in La Bay. We have teachers in Timberlake, and their mentors live in Belle Puche. So this is such a plus to have this in this school district. So that's something you can all pat yourself on the back for. Most students feel as if their teachers assist them, and they're people they can go to for help. So you see, we're using the word most, okay? Most teachers, or most students. Most students say they can talk to a school counselor if needed, and can identify goals for the future. And we have a couple of comments where kids wrote in that they appreciated everything that the counselor did for them. That was a strength. Most students agree their parents support their success at school. That is really good to hear, isn't it? That's like music to your ears, to know that that's going on. And most students say they have opportunities for after-school activities. I think that was like high, the ninety-five percent, almost everyone felt that they had something, if they wanted it, could go to. Most students and parents feel the level of difficulty, their assignments is appropriate and manageable. We also heard that most parents feel teachers care about their child, a very important thing. Most parents feel that the school provides a supportive learning environment, and we had some comments about that. Specifically, the high school had some strengths that were promoted. Most teachers said that they use instructional strategies and formatively assess learning, curriculum and instruction. You'll notice some teachers are using a variety of high-level instructional strategies. So we're going to talk about that later. Uh, some using them, higher-level thinking orders, and those kinds of instructional strategies. That's good, we're glad, but it wasn't enough for the high school team. So you're going to see that come up as a focus area also. Most teachers feel emotionally safe at school and think that staff members honor failing knowledge. The middle school has some strengths. Most teachers use appropriate instructional strategies, formatively assess, and establish a culture of learning. That culture of learning, again, is something that's so important, and I saw that when I observed in the classrooms, in the middle school. And that is saying, guess what, this is really important stuff, kids, this is stuff that you need because, and you're really smart kids, you're going to get this. And so it's just telling kids, we have high expectations for you, and you should have pride in your work. So that culture of learning is a very important piece, there we saw in the middle school. We also saw all students were following teachers' directions, and they were getting positive interactions with one another, quite observed. I like that in the middle school. You know, that's where the most fun is. Yeah, kids are always having fun in the middle school, but it was positive fun. And then the student-teacher interaction, interactions also were positive. So the next one is the elementary. So think back about your elementary days, and none of this is going to surprise you. Just go ahead and read through all of those strengths. Okay, so raise your hand if you're surprised that elementary kids say this. Yeah, probably not, yeah, that. And so it's great to see that there, that's exactly what we expect. So to summarize this piece, to summarize these strengths, we looked at a lot of evidence, and we found strengths in all four areas. So that's good news, isn't it? That's really good news. So before I go further and we move into the circle of influence and we talk about the focus areas, what questions might you guys have about any of these positive things you just saw? Any of these celebrations? Ah, okay, let's go. We're going to move on now, and after I did this, I'm going, this is, I just have to explain it. I'm looking at your, I did access to the school that I work with at night, oh, Mrs. Kelsey, I'm sorry for all the emails, but I have this great idea, I have this great idea, so I emailed her. So in my accession, I'm looking at Facebook, and I send these great pictures. Well, here is Nurse Julie, and it said, here was the caption, Nurse Julie is focusing on elementary something or other. Anyway, health, something or other. So I thought, focusing, that's a great picture for here, focus areas. So I want to be very clear, Nurse Julie's not a focus aerial. Okay? Nurse Julie just got to be in the picture here with all the little kids. So looking at some focus areas, I want to bring you to this. This is a piece that's very hard for anyone who's been a parent, anyone who's been a grandparent, any teachers, for most everyone. We care about so many things, but you can't impact everything. And so the conversations would get big, and they'd get long, because guess what? They care about everything. And I have to keep saying to the teams, only care, not only care about, only choose an area that you can focus on, that you can have a direct impact. Okay? So if I, as Mary Yu, who knows nothing about buses, and my biggest concern is that buses just don't run right, people tell me, I cannot get too cranked up about that, because I cannot do anything about buses. Can't fix a bus. But I can fix other things. Those are the ones I'm going to work on, the ones I really, really can have an impact on. So that's what a focus area is. Something that the data said we can fix, we can change, we can have an impact on. So I'll bring you back here now to the steps in the process, because I love the process. We are here where it says focus areas were identified and prioritized. So each school had nine or ten focus areas, and some of them were the same. Because, well, teachers are teaching, and kids are learning, and so some of the focus areas are the same. But when they prioritize them, you see this rubric, that had four different areas of measurement. Sometimes something will come to the top for the elementary, but it'd be kind of here in the middle for the middle school, or the high school, or the other way around. However, when looking at all of them, the way they were prioritized, they still can be a district focus. Just makes sense. So the teams went ahead and prioritized all these focus areas, had long conversations, went through a process to determine the root cause. Now I'm just going to throw a strategy at them, we're going to know what we're throwing it at. Created that action plan, still thinking about evaluation. So if you need to take a breath, we're halfway done. Okay? All right, you okay? All right, here's the district focus. I put an umbrella there because these, these areas are within, live with, underneath the umbrella. They're district areas of focus. So the first one is in curriculum and instruction. When we looked at curriculum and instruction, the elementary, well, the elementary was hard to hold back. I told them, you can only choose two or three focus areas, and they ended up with four. But some of the district is taking over some of those. So first we looked at how teachers design instruction. The elementary took over on that one, although it applies to all three schools. And one of the things we noticed is a uniform format for writing lessons, creating lessons, could make a difference. So we looked at, I looked at a lot of lesson plans. Well, here's what's interesting in your school. You're part of the accreditation process, you're accredited school, you want to stay that way. One of the things that's such a need to do was to write lesson plans. I happen to agree with lesson plans. I, I think we all need a plan, you know, we have to get through whatever we're going to do. And so the teachers are, are creating lesson plans. There needs to be a uniform format, is what we determined. So the elementary is going to research and find or implement a uniform format for lessons, and they are going to share that with the middle school and the high school. So, and they can have input too, of course, but they're taking the lead on this one. But it's something the whole district needs to do. Okay? Uh, I couldn't stop myself, I put the things there, the five things there, the lesson plan, and those are the things we looked for. And what we have to be very careful of is that we don't say, for every single class, you have to have a lesson plan this long. The elementary is going to figure out how to make that something that is reasonable for everyone to get done. And they'll use the input from the other two notes. Anyway, that's what they're going to work on. The next one, and this is a middle school, and we showed up middle school and high school actions both. And that is how teachers impact student learning. Again, another focus area in curriculum and instruction. This is around fostering higher-order thinking skills to engage students in learning. And it's like, it, it makes such an impact on kids. And we saw it happening, I think if you remember, I mentioned it earlier. It was, it was a strength in some places, but not, not deep enough. Okay? So when we talk about higher-order thinking skills, we've been hearing about those forever. It's as simple as this. There are some things that kids have to memorize, there are some things kids have to remember, and then they can recall them, and then they can use that information. They understand it, they comprehend it, they can analyze it, evaluate it, create it. When I think about this whole process that we went through, we could have memorized some things, and I could have told them to you, but our teams had to understand, apply, analyze, evaluate, and create. And that's what kids need to do. They need to be solving problems and answering questions. That's what engagement is. And so that is some, that's an area where middle school and high school determine they can get better at. But guess what? The elementary, if you bring in professional learning for fifteen teachers, you better have your whole staff there. It's something that everyone can benefit from. So that's how teachers impact learning. The next one is also on teachers' impact learning, a middle and high school actions. And this is to provide the skills and resources to develop and communicate clear learning outcomes to students. Well, clear learning outcomes live in lesson plans. So once the elementary does work on that lesson plan, see how nice this is going to be when they work together with the middle school and the high school? Now everyone has outcomes. Outcomes are important, they're very important. They're so important that I still use a marker. Those are your outcomes for today, that's how important they are. Students need to know what they are going to learn when they walk out the door. They need to know, just like you need to know tonight when you're learning from this report. It affects people's attitudes. So I go to church, I can flick through that bulletin, I know what's coming up. Sometimes you get a little surprised, but most times you know what's coming up. Anytime I go to a lesson, anytime I go to a meeting, I need to see the outcomes. They help teachers properly design a lesson. So before I designed any of this PowerPoint, I designed my outcome slide. I knew what I wanted you to know before I made any of this other information up, made this information up. Not say that, before I created the PowerPoint. Okay? So it helps us design a lesson, then helps us assess a lesson. And then students can assess too. They can assess, you said, I was going to learn this, I didn't learn, what's going on? Okay? So it's very important. I could go on and on about that question. Another thing that we looked at is family climate and culture, and this has to do with the partnerships. And the elementary got real excited about this because they said, we really used partnerships before COVID. And we want, we want to get that, go where we get it. So they have created a really nice, multi-step process to reconnect with their partnerships. But they're looking at it through the lens of student achievement. They don't just want to, they want a partnership person to be fun, but they don't want it to be just fun. The reason we're going to go to that farm is so kids learn what are their outcomes they're supposed to learn. So reconnecting partnerships, that showed up in the middle school and high school too, so it's a district-focused area. Um, so they're, they're going to resume that, that's what they're going to do. The next one also has to do with family climate and culture, is a student-centered culture and climate of learning and growth. And both the middle school and the high school spent hours on this one, wondering what they needed to know, and wondering what their next steps were going to be. The middle school has already started to develop, they're going to implement plan to ensure that every student is connected to an adult. You know, there just might be some that aren't there. The data told us that this needed to happen. And the middle school, they were very serious about this. And I'm really anxious to see how this plays out, and they want to start right away. Same with the high school. And the high school would like some professional, some professional development, and it might, and it might be right here at the school. It doesn't have to be outside of the school, but it might be. So that they can do everything in a power that makes kids feel safe and valued, and that kids' cultures are honored. So two, those, those, that particular one is so important. Happening in two schools, needs to happen across the district, it's a good thing to happen across the district. So it's a district priority. The other one is talent development. The elementary wrote this down, and actually, this is Heidi said, put this in yours, then they'll ensure that this gets done. Uh, the school needs a professional development committee that works together to collaborate, collect the data, and determine what professional learning needs to happen. Just like when I talked about that mental health professional learning. Okay? You need to spread that out and have representation from all three levels on that committee. And then provide that, provide the professional learning and evaluate it. Because if you have, for instance, let's go back to Love and Logic. Love and Logic came in, you did it for the school, students, staff, whatever, and you had a feeling that it was good. You thought it was good, you thought it made a difference. You might have heard some people say, that was pretty good, but you need an evaluation. So you know whether to do the second part or not. So you don't just keep doing professional development without an evaluation. So that's something that's on the elementary, uh, action plan. And they're going to coordinate that. The other one, again, I'm just picking on Mrs. Heidi, this is another one, but Mrs. Heidi, this is to be of, uh, one of the, um, uh, action plans was establishing clear priorities. Once they're established, how to keep attention on those priorities. So if you have a mental health priority, a communication priority, talking to your staff about that all the time. So she is going to incorporate feedback about the, uh, school priorities into the evaluation process. Not to say people are going to be evaluated on this, that is a place to document that the principals had conversations with the teachers about the school priorities. Now, uh, communication already lives there because it is evaluated. For she's communicating with families, it's part of the evaluation process, it's already there. But we don't know for sure what the school priorities will be next year, so she is going to take that on. So it looks like this. You don't have this slide, I had to summarize this because it, it just works in my head better if I have a summary slide. The elementary defined four areas that they were going to work on. That lesson plan, lesson design, lesson plan, community partnership. Principal establishing and communicating those priorities, that's effective leadership. We expect the leadership to take that over with, and work with the elementary to do that professional development committee and the plan. Again, effective leadership will take that over. The middle and high school, higher-order thinking skills, and students feeling safe, valued, cultured, honored, and the student connections. There cannot be two more important areas in school, there just can't. I'm very proud of them taking on such big, big actions. And then that middle school is taking on that learning outcomes. So you can see that they've taken on a lot of work. It takes a long time to find out if what you're doing is really making a difference. So they're going to have to find, they're going to have to evaluate this as it goes. Oftentimes, something like higher-order thinking skills, that's not even going to show up for a year or two. You know, we aren't going to see that in test scores until it's down the road, but it will show up. So that's a summary of the focus areas. Um, what are some questions that you guys have about the focus areas? Because there's, it's big, it's really big. Not big that, while there's a lot of things that can be fixed. These are things that the teachers, the team felt passionate about, that they wanted to make happen. Well, if there aren't any questions, let's look at the last piece, the action plan and the evaluation part. This is what an action plan looks like. And you can see it's supposed to start in the fall of twenty twenty-two. It's started already, something to be very proud of. Uh, it's only for one year. Now, those of you in the business community, you know that you should make action plans for longer than that. Uh, that is, this is the way the South Dakota Community Needs Action Plan is for one year, but it doesn't stop anybody from making a second, third, or fourth, fifth-year plan. The plan is fluid. If they find out something isn't working, this was the wrong action, this particular strategy's not working, they're going to change it. Okay? This particular plan is part of the Title I, uh, school-wide Title I plan. And so they will be submitting this to the South Dakota Department of Ed along with their Title I plan. One of the things is the theory of action. And the theory of action says, if something happens, then this is going to happen, and then there's going to be a result. So, um, I just want to share a couple of these with you. This is a theory of action for one of the schools. If we add the support and guidance through professional development, then teachers can incorporate strategies to improve climate and culture, and provide more opportunities for students to use higher-level thinking skills, and students will experience personal and academic growth. That is huge, isn't it? That's huge. But that's their end statement. If, if they do, if they get the support, and they do, if they have said that they're going to do it and happen. And then for the plan, uh, you can see it, there's a lot of steps to it. Couple of actions, a lot of steps. This is the middle school, uh, theory of action. If we get the guidance and support through professional development, then teachers can incorporate instructional strategies and framework for teaching components to increase the climate, culture, and instruction, and students can demonstrate personal growth and academic growth. And the elementary said, oh, I said that like, I just set it up, oh, I love this one. I, I don't love it anymore than both, I just kind of use that kind of inflection in my voice for some reason. If the administration provides a guidance and support through adequate resources, then the teachers can implement a uniform format for designing lessons. They can resume community partnerships and coordinate with the other schools to provide quality professional development, and include the elementary school priorities, which will increase student achievement. I mean, I just think that's practically, I don't know, that just really rules me that those are the statements. I have worked with, I don't even know how many, over twenty schools, doing this. These are powerful statements, folks, that people took a lot of time and effort, uh, and meant what they said, that that's going to happen. What questions do you have about the action plans? Well, you guys got to do some next, or, you guys, they have next steps, they have things that they need to do. They are a school leadership team. Uh, some of the slides, some of the things we went over when we worked on this were always about effective conflict, uh, cognitive conflict, we talked about leadership skills, so, uh, that was kind of built in with the training. And so the principal is an active member. We're very fortunate to have active member, the principals to be active in this. They were never intimidating, they were there to give us information. Um, kind of had to pull out their opinion because they didn't, they tried to lighten where the teachers were concerned. But the principal has to be a part of this. They're going to communicate these action plans to the staff, very important. Communicate is kind of a big word for, guess what? We have nine steps here that we are going to be expecting people to do. So that all has to be worked out, how that will be done. The one nice thing is, is this has been transparent so far. I think the principals have reported to the board, and the teachers know, these are the things we're talking about. So it's not all new. Um, the SLTs will use that action plan, because there's timelines on there, and get those, they have responsibilities, and they know what those responsibilities meant. They're going to meet monthly to assess and evaluate the progress. Not just wait till the end year to get smarter balance scores, no way, they're going to assess progress as we go. They're going to create and implement an evaluation tool for these strategies. Okay? You have to have something, you have to have a rubric, you have to measure it in something, and determine the effect of the action on student progress, and adjust that plan as necessary. So immediate steps, communication of the plan, determine what actions have to be done yet this school year and this summer. I know the high school has some things that they, some surveys, some focus groups that they want to do with students, yet this spring. So they have data, where they, they'll come back next fall. Uh, what needs to be addressed immediately, uh, if you're going to get any kind of professional development in here, you got to get them booked right away. Here's what you need to do. Secure a monitor to ensure that all the stakeholders are informed, updated, that the SLTs meet monthly. You know how easy it is to put off a meeting? But if you have someone from the outside calling, saying, remember, Friday, eight o'clock, we meet. And this is what we're going to do. One of the things is that we have a professional development committee formed that takes actions and creates those data tools, and then adjusts the plan as necessary. So this is very important. Uh, the schools, the Department of Ed that I work with, they, they have a monitor that calls them every month, comes to their readings, and makes sure that this plan just doesn't become something in a three-ring binder up on a shelf. It's the last thing you want after all of this work. And then you also need someone to ask the tough questions. Like, seriously, tell me, how did that work again? Is this working? Is this what you want to continue to do? What changes need to be made? So that's, that's very important. So our summary, the outcome is that we're going to gain an understanding of the process and the framework of the comprehensive needs assessment, that you are going to learn, be able to identify the strengths and the areas of focus, and be familiar with the next steps. So that's what this report was all about. But I, it seems so short after eight months, but it's starting to work, but this is, this is what happened. So I would ask you again, what questions do you have? I'd be glad to answer any questions about this whole process, about the framework, the four different components, about the strengths, the areas of focus, and action plans. about the strengths, the areas of focus of action plans. See, I just want to start nothing. No questions, okay. Oh, here we go, sure.
You spent a lot of time with us, and you probably weren't familiar with the school before. What did you learn about the WLSI West Virginia School District when you were here?
The biggest thing I learned is this school is much more invested in curriculum, instruction, and people than I thought. What we see is successful football teams and successful basketball teams and successful music. We see that. I didn't realize the degree of focus on curriculum, instruction, and people. I really learned that that, that isn't focused. Thanks for asking that. Made me think. Anything else? Well, thank you very much for allowing me to be part of this and to work with these people. And I wish you all the best of luck. I am only fifteen miles away. I probably randomly will call and say, you guys working on those action plans? So thank you.
Mary Lou?
Yes.
So you guys keep that.
We will keep it, we'll hang it up.
All right. The next alum is the first man here.
I don't have a whole lot this time, just a couple of things. One is election tomorrow, so I'm hoping to get out of the room. Got to book a train, hopefully, so we're ready to go tomorrow. And the other thing is I just want to make everyone aware of is there will be no free, all free meals next year. So we're going to put the word out as a letter to the parents encouraging to keep a lookout for the pre-graduation applications. And we go sell them. Because it's starting for state school, things will be there.
My parents pick a lot up.
I don't, I don't have the application yet to return. But we will be getting those on the service.
Thank you.
Elementary principal? This week, we started our smarter balance testing in grade three for eight. On Wednesday, the PTO has provided snacks for the students. Today, we had a dare graduation for fifth grade. We had twenty-nine students graduating with a good taste. And then maybe have some music after, kind of a special program. No, I have to go.
Thank you.
Secondary principal?
First, congratulations to all the students that placed at state posa, and there were several. We had students qualify for nationals that will be held June twenty-second through the twenty-sixth in Nashville, Tennessee. Jason Gole played first in health career photography. Faith Nelson was second place in medical law and ethics event. Sheera Nois first place in cultural diversities and disparities in healthcare. Sheera Nois first place in physical therapy event. Gianna Richmond first place in biomedical lab science event. And second place, Maddie Larson. So that's amazing. Miss Julie, Nurse Julie is here. So Mrs. Stevens and Julie Lusmar are the advisors. And for that many, that is just amazing. For that many to qualify, it takes a lot of work in working with them. So thank you very much. We had other students placed in the top ten as well. Vet science, Kate Hamilton. Medical math, Peyton Chemnitz. Medical law and ethics, Alexis Stevens. Congratulations to the track teams for a great start to their season. They had several athletes do place in Redfield on Friday. And Tatum Lewis broke the school record for the high jump. The next meet is scheduled for Thursday, Thursday at the Smith, a weather permitting. The eighth through twelfth grade students attended a presentation last Monday called Funding for Future. And they were exposed to a lot of information that promoted thinking about their finances as they go through high school and start their post-secondary life. Neil Cruz, our contact at Job Service, will be here tomorrow with some business people to conduct interviews with some of our students as part of South Dakota's Week of Work. Last week, the student council held a blood drive. Thank you to all the donors that filled the spots so that we could host another successful drive. The juniors just finished their smarter balance state testing last week. And our freshmen and sophomores will complete the measure of academic progress testing next week. Just reminders that the grand marks for prom will be held at seven thirty on April twenty-third. And our open house will be from five to seven P M. on April twenty-eighth. On April twenty-ninth, we will host the Jimmy R. Track Meet at Redfield in honor of Jimmy, who was a WLSI high school graduate. So we hope that we can have lots of people attend that and have a nice sunny day for that event.
Thank you. Med Central report. Oh, yeah, yeah. We didn't have a Med Central meeting. They're pushing it back to the next month. So we will have one next. Okay, cool. Okay. Next on the list is our consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion by Kevin. Second by Brooke. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Uh, we have our action items. New and unfinished business. First on the list is the teacher wish list. Jamie actually reached out to me a few weeks ago. He asked if there was a way, like we asked for donations for Miller. Maybe if you teachers, the ones that are here, I don't know. You guys can get the word back to everybody else. If there is something that you're looking for that you have to spend out of pocket, maybe reach out, maybe we can have Brandy make a list on Facebook or the website. You guys can put it on there. Parents at that point can donate. Parents are very, most parents are very willing to help if you guys need something. And that kind of takes a little of what you guys are spending out of pocket. So I will get with Mrs. Jones McKelsey and maybe with Brandy and see what we can do on that. And then there'll be some last three best. Next is S D H S A A School Board Resolution.
This is just the resolution that has to be passed every year for WLSI West Virginia to continue to be part of the South Dakota baseball activities.
Do I have a motion to approve the school board resolution?
So moved.
Motion by Kevin. Do I have a second?
A second.
Second by Jeff. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Nine point three S A S B S D ballot.
This concerns the Associated School Board Region Director. And I sent you the biographies of those candidates. My recommendation would be Shane Roth of the Smith, because it is high school, of his experience not only on their High School Board of Education, but on A S B S D. But I would open up for any discussion anyone wants. I don't know personally any of the people on the ballot.
Any discussion on that? Can you say Shane? Shane Roth of the Smith, okay?
I'd move that we follow the demonstrations in book and cast our ballot for that individual from these men.
Okay.
Second.
Kevin, second by Ted. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. A S B S D Proactive Trust Joint Powers Agreement and Bylaws. A S B S D Benefits Fund and Participation Agreement.
Basically, these are the, the A S B S D updated their bylaws just so we'll keep them updated. And so we just need to approve, there was really no big changes, just fixing the wording and updating. And then Benefits Fund and Participation Agreement and adds to so-called still there health insurance goal.
Do I have a motion to approve Proactive Trust Joint Powers Agreement and Bylaws and Benefits Fund and Participation Agreement? Motion. Motion by Asher. Second by Brooke. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Mini bus.
So that would go on the discussion that you guys had last week because the decision was got to be made whether there's going to be one order, two order, or zero. And then basically it will be, motion will be approving mini bus based on, uh, whether. So if Wyver does not take it, then we can go off of it. But basically, we're just we back off their, off course there.
If they choose not to proceed, then we, we won't pursue a mini bus. We just have to let them, or put it off and get the stock on scrap, okay?
Right. And it'll be, it'll probably come in higher than what they have for one minute.
What was that?
They won't have their election until, or not election, their meeting until August.
It was sixty-seven thousand, Ted, I don't think it was.
Sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred and seventy-two. And Travis at Foreman said that is only going to keep going up quite substantially, possibly. And the earliest to be ordered time now, the earliest to get them is January.
Would it matter if we push it out too? Can you do it to by January?
My recommendation would be two because we're in a crunch right now. As of today, we're down to one more drive for the remainder of the school year. So we will be sending, most days, we are going to be sending two suburban family relatives almost every day for the remainder of the school year.
So Jennifer, if we do one bus, it's in addition to what we currently have?
So what do you mean?
In the bus part, we're not, the, the whole grant thing, like replacing?
I checked into that. You cannot purchase a mini bus with that grant because it's got to be equal or greater value. And we don't have any of those. So there would be no reason to wait for the grant. I checked into that.
Is there a trade-in value on our existing buses if we?
Probably on, uh, two of them that would be traded. There's one that we got just a few years ago. We only bought it for twenty thousand dollars. It's not fancy at all. It's, but it runs well. So I think that would be a good discussion for the transportation community and Mr. Ute to have as well. But I just think it, something's got to be done and done pretty quickly to be prepared for. And that would be not until January, but.
I guess right now I'd be, I'd be a hundred percent for one bus, but I don't really feel the need to spend a hundred and forty thousand dollars on two mini buses right now. That's just my gut feeling. I agree, we need one. We can implement that in the war. Currently, there might be two routes that have fourteen or fewer kids, correct?
Correct.
Maybe we could alleviate the other problem by combining some routes. We work on our whole process before fall. Possibly, if that's even possible. But I'm not comfortable buying two buses tonight. But I'm a hundred percent for purchasing one. Is there a way we can get Foreman to come and look at our two buses that we would be replacing and getting asked for that? You know, if they say, hey, we could be fifty thousand for two buses, trade them towards, if we did two of the buses?
I'm sure they would come and do that. If we do two, does, do we get that address from them?
I think we don't. If you wait to buy, I don't know, basically, we have, but their performance will honor the press.
Right. That bid's going to end this week. Just from what little I've learned from Foreman's in the past year or something there, Jamie, they may buy a bus from us. And what they would probably do, just be asking me to check with them that they'd come and buy your buses and indicate which one they made. They're not, they're not going to be too attracted to our twenty thousand dollar bus.
And it wouldn't make sense to trade that one off or go pay for it for getting our money back.
Exactly. The majority of our bus fleet is pretty good.
Because we just started a couple of years ago.
Right, we bought them, we lost three years in a row, completely. With the trade-in grant system. And that wouldn't go for us. Our problem is it busts, it's bus drivers. And it's trouble, it's, it's not enough. Can't, 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 um.
If we do, we did buses to that performance to come to a court or to bigger buses, which is going to cost us more to replace at some point?
I don't foresee that because we've been buying the biggest buses. The problem is exactly what Kevin said. We do not have drivers, we're naming drivers right now to be able to drive the buses.
We can get five.
With the C E O.
We can venture later on that we're not into very big, but that we need the bigger buses. So we have something, something to do now, but now we're looking at how much dollars to the big bus that we trade in.
And if there's one more year of the grant program or if that's still, that's about psyched now. I think we only have one bus left in our fleet that we can be able to trade in unless they change the regulations. Because that trading program is based on emission limit buses. And the last year probably bought will never qualify for the grant unless they change that whole program. But we for sure could see if all the forums have any interest in buying any of our other buses. And I pursue that, that's going to be, unfortunately. But there are probably, we probably wouldn't need if we buy two. We damn sure don't need that many seven in the garage.
Do we have a discussion on the mini bus?
I could have a great, this one bus, we'll bring it up, I would have that motion, but I won't leave my side.
Okay. Motion by Jeff. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Kevin. All those in favor, say aye. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Nine point six approved audit.
So, this job.
Was that a motion to buy the least one bus?
One bus.
Just one.
So it wasn't, the wording I read was that at least one bus.
Motion to buy one bus.
So was it just, I just wanna, I just wanna make sure.
One bus.
Okay.
Yep.
So audit is done, and there is a copy of it, um, the following act that I gave to you guys, the legislative law that has approved it too, and so basically, just needs the schools approval.
Any questions for Amy from the audit room, you see? Okay, do I have a motion to approve the audit?
Motion.
Motion by Ted, second. Second by Brooke. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Nine point seven contracts for board approval. We each have a list, let's do nine point seven point one first. I have a motion to approve the contracts in nine point seven point one.
Motion.
Motion by Ted. Second. Second by Ashley. All those in favor say aye.
I'm gonna abstain from this vote, because there are people's veins on that list that I probably should have approved their contract.
Um, Jeff will also abstain, but, please.
Yeah, yes, that's a lot.
Uh, they'll do a roll call vote for this one.
Josh, yeah.
Is he in nine point seven point one?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yep. All right. Amy, do you want to do a little roll call?
Sure.
Jamie? Ashley? Ted?
Yes.
Ted, Terry? Yes. Okay, a motion was carried with Brooke, Kevin, and Jeff, let's see. Nine point seven point two. And a motion to approve the contracts as listed.
So move.
Motion by Jeff. And a second. Yeah. Second by Ashley. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Nine point seven point three, Jeff and Sharon lose twelve for summer work. And then I think you do the, the dollar. Do you want to do it here, or go on to nine point ten? Um.
That, ten, Terry, it's for teachers, or anyone else coming?
Okay, so we need a rate of paper, Jeff and Sharon.
So last year, we paid seventeen seventy five in that position?
Okay. Any discussion on the summer work?
That's probably how many hours is a, a week?
Depends on how much training you have.
I mean, is it over twenty, less than twenty, ten, what?
With them working together, it's probably a total of thirty to twenty, just because on the football field, we're, that has to stay.
Sure.
Wired.
Sure.
Well, I think they do a good job.
They do a great job.
No question about that, I guess I would, I would make a motion to improve their wage one dollar an hour more, eighteen seventy five. I think they do a good job.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, so we have a motion to fire Jeff and Sharon, lose twelve for summer work at eighteen seventy five per hour. Motion by Jeff, second by Kevin. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Nine point eight is surplus. Golf materials?
I didn't put anything above that, because I just, I have had a lot of questions on golf, so I put it as an action, I don't know if you believe it or not. Uh, but what I would like to do is surplus those, we did have the sport of golf, but since we haven't had it, we do have items, there are nets, cutting greens, things such as that, so I would like to have a surplus to get those out of storage and sell those.
Do we see golf ever putting back?
I have no idea.
I was one of those shocked ones, that we have golf in the area.
It's been quite a few years, Carver, Carver Bartels was our coach.
I remember that after some recess I have. Okay, do I have a motion to surplus the golf materials on hand? Motion. Motion by Ashley. And a second, second by Brooke. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Count time for teachers for open house.
So we did not have the open house on the calendar, and one of the reasons we put that on there is because we really want to bring families into the district, current families in perspective. Uh, that's, you know, outside of what we had for the teachers, so I would like to see them pay for their time that night, for the two hours that they'll be here.
Okay. All teachers are required to be here?
Mm-hmm.
Do you have an amount to move?
What we paid last year for their summer rate of pay was twenty five dollars an hour, so I would like to see these up.
Okay. Any discussion on the time time for teachers for open house?
I'd make a motion that we set the count time rate for teachers at the open house at twenty five dollars an hour.
You want us to move, get her?
Uh, no.
Nope.
Second.
Motion by Ted, second by Jamie. Um, we'll take a roll call vote for this, that will be.
Is, are they in that?
Yep.
Okay.
Uh, just. Ashley?
Brooke? Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Nine point ten, summer work rate of pay out of contract time.
So that is for, uh, summer work for certified staff, for things such as summer school, and for Brandy Kelsey as the local tech person. Because Exotech will not be coming to get all the machines ready, they'll train her, and she'll do that. So she will get, uh, about four hundred machines ready for the fall. So my recommendation, last year what we paid was twenty five dollars an hour for both of those. Uh, I know Brandy does not have the degree that the person had that we had do that last summer. So, right, my recommendation for certified staff would be twenty five dollars an hour for the certified staff for their services in the summer, and twenty dollars an hour for Brandy for the tech part of her job.
Did Exotech do that work last year as part of their generic contract? They did do that.
We paid.
Initially, I thought they did that.
But we can save a lot of money, we can save a lot of money by having them train some local.
We paid for you. Like, first year, I think we paid them to do that, then they charged her laptop.
Between that and between what she's doing, we're saving almost seventeen thousand dollars a year.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion to approve certified staff at twenty five dollars per hour, and for Brandy Kelsey at twenty five dollars?
So move.
Motion by Ted. Second.
Second.
Motion by Ashley. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Nine point eleven is the survey results. I do want to thank everybody who took their time to fill out the survey, um. We, there are numerous spots that we will see are blanked out. Um, there are names, assumptions of names, um, we can't release that information. We can show you the survey, I have looked at it, Ted has looked at it, our attorney has looked at it, um. I think Amy has copies.
Thank you.
All right, again, the board wants to thank everybody for their cooperation on the survey. Um, sometimes, we only hear the bad, sometimes we only hear the good, but it's, it's great to, great to at least have some sort of, um, results from that. All right, nine point one two, enrollment number history.
Okay, I forgot, I forgot to pick it up, but I brought it up.
Okay.
So in FY twenty two, we had a total of three hundred and forty, two hundred and two of them were in district, and a hundred and thirty eight went out of district. In FY twenty one, we had three hundred and fifty three total, two hundred and nine in district, and a hundred and forty four out of district. FY twenty, there was three hundred and fifty eight students. Two hundred and twenty four were in district, and one thirty four was out of district. FY nineteen, three hundred and forty six total, two hundred and fourteen in district, and a hundred and thirty two out of district. FY eighteen, there was three hundred and sixty two, two hundred and thirty three in district, and a hundred and twenty nine out of district.
Okay. Any questions on the enrollment numbers from the previous years?
I'm sorry to hear that.
Three hundred and forty total, two hundred and two in district, and a hundred and thirty eight out of district. But we do get quite a few out of district students.
About forty percent.
Do you have any other numbers starting next year?
Okay, do I have any other questions? Moving on, open enrollment.
So it's twenty twenty three dash five to twenty twenty three dash eleven, and so, uh, those are students for the following grades, K, and this is the order that they were presented to us in, K, sixth, twelfth, eighth, eleventh, eleventh, and twelfth. And we can't meet the needs of all of those students.
Do you know about the number we expect to have in kindergarten next year?
Oh, yes.
There's been new ones coming in kindergarten, or the total kindergarten class, because there's always, um, some retention there, so.
Could you give both?
Right now, we have fifteen coming in new. And I can't for sure say, but I can say there's a high probability that there would be about eighteen and nineteen in class. Are kindergarten classes still being split? Two teachers? Or with eighteen, just one? I don't know. Or we can just split them. Well, I, I, I think it should, it would be good to talk about, I mean, not actual splits, but it's been a long time since we've been, it's been years and years since we've been here, but, when I hear number of fifteen coming in, and we're graduating thirty two, I mean, that's, that's a big concern. There's, there's never been a set number, it's always been, theory, it's, it's been a lot of years since we've had a half a discussion like this.
Um, my personal opinion is I think, um, yeah, if we make decisions like that, I, I think that is every session is a place, so I can tell the teachers we want.
Okay. Nope, I just wanted to make sure that we weren't enough. Yep. Okay. So a motion, any other discussion on the open enrollment that administration has given us? Do I have a motion to approve the open enrollment? Motion.
Second.
Motion by Ashley, second by Ted. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Addition of kitchen worker. So I ask for your permission to speak about this openly. She will start this school year, uh, I've met with Marilyn and Marie, and that is a difficult position. Schools are trying to find people to replace people that are retiring out of food service, uh, there are special certifications you have to have. They came to me and they would like to add an additional worker with the intent that Marine would like to train that person, and when that person is trained, retire. If that's a month, she'd like to retire after a month. You know, if it's, uh, she would still come in as needed, and as Marilyn needed to be gone, but, it's not a job someone can just come in and learn completely the timing of everything, I mean, when they're cooking that much food every day, it's quite a process, so I, I liked their idea because it just helps, they do all of the records, they have to calculate for every meal too, all the nutritional needs to make sure that everything needs that. Uh, there's a computer program that does that as well, but the learning curve is going to be there for her, so, I would strongly support that there is a kitchen worker added, with the intent that there will be three of them when school year starts, but Marine will phase out.
Okay.
What kind of certifications, just out of curiosity, do you need?
What you need?
They go to, they have to go to classes, but as far as the initial ones. Um, now this would be more of a director, which Marilyn is, but we need to start, I think it would be very proactive to get a person in there that's interested in learning all those things, so when Marilyn does decide to retire, that they would do this. They have to meet educational standards, that's what it says on here, uh, they, I know they have to go through summer classes, the initial, I don't know. It just says date of safety food training they would have to have, minimum of eight hours, or date of planned safety training. It just says date of safety food training they would have to have, minimum of eight hours, or date of planned safety training within thirty days of hire. They have to learn that process of calculating those.
They have to, uh, every year, depending on if you're the director or, so Marilyn needs a few more hours than, um, Marie, but every year they have to, um, do so much. So there's a conference and that accounts for quite a bit of it, uh, they do do that safety food training. There's other programs or presentations that they can go to, but they have to, there's so many hour requirements that they have to do every year. So they try to make it to the conference and, and that, um, does better for. But everyone, so including myself, I, I'm supposed to, because I work with the food service program, have to do some training, um, anyone that basically does something, needs to do a little bit, depending on where you.
And how many, every, how many years Amy, do they have a food review, because their big review is next year.
They try to. They try to.
It's been a few years since we've gotten to this position here. Whatever the odds, do we think of somebody coming with these credentials or are we gonna have to come up with something to put them through?
The one nice thing is that if it was decided now, some of those trainings during the summer.
That's what I'm saying. I mean, if somebody comes with a degree, actually we discuss what we wanna do for somebody who wouldn't have it, so we are on the power of that. Do you have any idea what cost the company?
A doing.
It's, I can't remember how much the conference fee is.
We could take care of that for you soon.
Then we do, then. I don't know, but still.
Okay.
Or even if it's like that. Sometimes the other ones wasn't, still talk about different, different plates which might be, um, beneficial for, you know. Even the cashier or, um, what makes up that food plate, so that I could do, do the third plate.
So nothing additional, I guess, is to say that we don't normally do, would have to be paid for to put somebody through it, that doesn't already happen.
Right.
Okay.
They've loosened up a few requirements a little bit more, but you, you might have to put a plan back together and have to get a trick if they don't have the degree or the experience. For schools ourselves.
Okay.
It's a big award, it's a better award, so it'd be nice to have them get a training. And that's why I'm here to.
When is the conference?
It's usually not sure.
I'm not sure.
Um. July, I don't know.
Okay. So I'm assuming you would advertise now? For a higher date?
I think that would be the best thing, yes.
We have a motion to add a kitchen staff. Motion by Brooke.
Yeah.
Second by Ashley, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Special education director.
So do you want to move that to executive session?
Okay. Moving on.
Yeah, that's my fault.
Okay, so I thought maybe I. Um, nine point seventeen, Karen Clark as an, as election worker.
I have placed one of my election workers, 'cause she, the other one, not like it. Karen Clark to, or over to Leslie.
Okay. I have a motion to approve Karen Clark as an election worker and Leslie.
Motion.
Motion by Ted.
Second.
Second by Brooke, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Nine point eighteen, certified staff negotiated agreement. Do we have copies of this somewhere? Or we just need to move?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, the negotiations committee met with certified and non-certified staff, um, the agreement, I think everybody's seen one at this point, 'cause I think we have a little agreement. A couple months ago.
You guys emailed out the, oh, the full agreement, and then Ted emails it out the second.
So, Mr. Bishop, thank you for your editing on the changes that we made. Most of them are dates changing from one year to the next. The other items in there, there would have changed, would have been the salary adjustment, the base salary, and then some changes to the city bank for staff, is there anything I'm missing?
Would have also been the, uh. Not Ted, your, uh.
Longevity.
Longevity. Longevity chart.
Table, that, uh, was also changed or added to.
Our longevity table cut off a certain number of years, I think it was twenty.
Yeah.
Zippy. Zippy, so no one could figure out why, we cut it off at twenty. We couldn't come up with a reason why, believe it at twenty or why not change it, and it seemed reasonable to reward staff for being loyal to us and us being loyal to them, it's all sense. So we recommend continuing. And we added one position to the extracurricular duties table, and that was.
Assistant F O B.
Assistant F O B.
What was the change period? Certified staff will be here from eight to four. That was the agreement.
Currently, they have the option between seven forty five to three forty five or eight AM to four PM. Next year, it'll just be eight A M to four P M.
Any other discussion on that? Do I have a motion to approve the certified staff, do you want to refer to that?
So move.
Motion by Ted. Second by Ashley, all those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Nine point nineteen is classified staff, um, we did meet with them this last week. Uh, the changes that were made will mirror the certified staff for the second thing. The longevity. How much will change that? The, um, paras' hour will change from seven forty five to three forty five, um, so they will be here from seven forty five to three forty five. Anything else? Since you're the lucky one who's here there to meet with us. Um, other than that, if we change dates. I'll turn it to Matt, so that's about it. We have a motion to approve the classified staff negotiated agreement.
Motion.
Motion by Ashley.
Second.
Second by Brooke, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. At this time, we will go into executive session, sub quote, card five, log one dash twenty five dash two, we are going into personnel and negotiations. Um, we'll ask that everybody steps out, you are more than welcome to stand until we are completely finished, um, we are finished, we'll come up, get you guys in the desk and come back. And our motion to go into executive session at eight, thirty minutes.
Motion by Jeff.